Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your patience. If you'll take notice of the emergency exits down the hallway there to your left, and there's another here. And if you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Has the board had an opportunity to review the February 2024 minutes?
Yes.
Have a motion to accept them then.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? First item on the agenda is Kemco Development Corporation here for the public hearing. No. Okay. Where did we leave off with that, Dan? I forgot, Aletha. Whoever remembers?
So, the last meeting, Jim Moran was there on my behalf. And he did indicate to me that he was working on a draft letter to give to the applicant. But we needed to find out some more information. I have to reach out to the applicant and his representative, or probably the applicant, possibly directly, to get that information for the draft letter. So I'd asked the board to consider giving them an opportunity to the next meeting for response.
All right. So, is the letter sent to them?
No, the letter was not because of the information, certain information needed to be gleaned based on examination of public records in the prior application. From like, I think it was six years ago or five years ago, there was a private resubdivision. It had to do with the lots.
Longer, doesn't it, actually?
2019.
So he was no representative?
That's when they purchased.
Right. The wetland specialist said that he had flags of wetlands towards the bottom of the property, and we've been asked for that. We've been asking for that survey for several months. Recently, we saw that there were flags, and they haven't located them on your plans yet after multiple requests.
My notes also indicate that the applicant did reach out to our planning secretary. So they're, it appears that they're engaged. I don't know if they're representative.
What does that mean, what you said? Specifically?
The applicant has, the representative has not. And so they're having some correspondence issues there.
Between?
The representative, the professional and the applicant.
And I was told by email that the wetlands were actually surveyed, and they asked me to come to the site. And I said, well, just send me the map first so I can go to the site. And I never got a map, and that was it.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't blame you. Don't waste any time. Let them send you a map first.
Yeah, I want to see the maps.
But also, the integrity of the delineation is gone because of the amount of time. That was a point that Rob brought up.
I think what you can do is direct the planning secretary to notify the applicant and his representative directly in order them to appear at the next meeting in person.
Okay. All right.
Do we need a motion to do that?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to direct the planning board secretary to require the applicant to attend the next meeting.
And I think it should go one step further. If not, if they don't provide the information in the comment letter that Dan has provided them with in the past, that we'll close the public hearing and deny the application.
I'll second that.
Yes?
You want to amend my motion?
I do. I'd like to amend Mr. Roberto Lopez's motion to include those two items.
I'll second that.
You will? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
So whose motion was it?
It was his initial motion. I amended it.
Okay. So my motion by the chairman, seconded by Rob.
Yep, by himself. And, yeah, we're on our way. Okay. Okay, so, have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Okay. Mr. Crane, this is like Groundhog Day, huh?
It is.
Yep. My apologies, Mr. Crane.
Bill Crane, 254 Gardner Hollow Road. I was sure that this was the last meeting, and it would be denied at this meeting. That's the message I got from last, from hearing the last meeting. The application has, has had so many problems and never appears. The steep slope problem, the trees problem, the wetlands problem, it never appears. I understand certain communications didn't go out. Wish the world would treat me with such leniency every time I mess up.
Would be nice. I guess, I mean, we're trying to follow protocol before we, you know. So if the town attorney could get that letter out to the applicant, and then we could proceed towards closure if they, if they're unresponsive and don't want to move forward.
If they're languishing, right. Absolutely. Any other comments from the board? CAC? No? Anybody in the community like to comment about the Kemco? Okay.
I mean, I'll comment that, you know, I'm concerned about the wetland flagging. The flagging was done some time ago, but the survey didn't follow soon thereafter. So I'm questioning the accuracy of that wetland flagging. It may need to happen, we may need to have a new wetland delineation done in order to get a proper, accurate assessment of the wetlands, which is important to understand when considering their application.
And put it on the plans?
Yes.
Would be nice also.
Yep.
As well as the other items that Dan delineated on the comment letter. So with that said, can I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Can, let's just do date specific, please. That would be April 18.
April 18, 2024.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Second public hearing item, Pizzuto Lot Line. I have a letter that I can read. Hi, Aletha. We will request an adjournment for this application. We are at the end of the health department approval process. Last week, the DEC requested that we resend our October submission. They have confirmed receipt of the document. So that is, that is their comment to this point. Again, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak about the Pizzuto Lot Line? All right.
No need to open the.
No need to open.
Mr. Attorney.
Will, Craig, how would you?
Well, the public hearing has remained opened while they diligently tried to obtain this information and letter from DEC. I understand DEC has received of the request, but they have not yet acted. I know the DEC is busy. Our engineer can attest to that. You can keep the public hearing open for the next month in order to obtain this additional information, at which point you'll reopen public hearing.
Okay. At least there's some progress being made there. And the delay isn't as a result of the applicant, from what I can see here. So we can, so we don't need to open or close. Is that right? I mean, open and adjourn? Yeah.
We could do that.
Oh, you want us to? Okay. So a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Again, anybody from the public that would like to speak about the Pizzuto Lot Line? Motion to adjourn. April 18, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, next item on the agenda for discussion, Duchess Contracting Corporation.
It's good.
All these, all these documents, Brian.
You know, just try to overload your paper. I just wanted to give you guys an update. We worked a pretty extensive traffic study with Colliers Engineering, and it was to the point where they gave us a preliminary layout. I know Pete was pretty set on seeing what the left turn lane looked like, so they spent some time, got us a draft left turn lane in.
Which document is that on? The conditional plan? Conditions plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, so this is the existing here, the Bishoff Lane, and then it cuts over. Yeah.
There's your left turn lane.
This is a particular approach, Route 55. And the left turn lane is, the lane is actually at 24th. That's a left turn lane. Originally, we thought when we were doing some of the site design, that we might have to do a right away dissection to allow this left turn lane to be created, however, depending on the amount of right away wetlands currently there. We don't need to do the right away dissection, so it's kind of shipped our building.
This is the eyelets. This is the existing road that goes like that, and they're looking to come straight in here.
So no need for right away acquisitions, I believe?
Yes, sir. So what I wanted to do, I mean, we've been kind of injured going forward on this project because a lot of the layout is actually not determined by zoning. It starts with three inch and you back into whatever impervious coverage can be, just because it's a little bit more difficult than we anticipated. So the original, you know, 54 units, I think we're down below 50 units now, we're 40. So I just want to keep giving the board an update. I think the biggest one that was hanging out there was, what does the left turn lane look like? How does it affect the front building? And is DOT okay with what we're proposing? So at the last step now with DOT, Colliers has reached out to DOT for input on this layout. Again, definitely has some timing, you know, believe it or not, the traffic study takes a little bit longer than anticipated. So I didn't have an answer from Colliers tonight on their interaction with DOT, but it is forthcoming. But I just want to give the board an update that, you know, this is what it's, it's kind of shaken up to be. What are these units, left turn lane there, stormwater management facility located toward Route 55?
Was that the traffic study and the plans that were sent to DOT?
Yes. Yep. And I believe Colliers was hoping to have a sit down meeting this week. I don't know if that happened. I know they were planning to schedule a meeting back and forth.
Do you know who the permit engineer is there for this area now? Just wondering.
It was, if this one's going to be.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, I just, I didn't know who it was now. Oh, okay.
Yeah, she's going to be, she'll be the permit engineer on this.
Did you say Cassandra Bibbo?
Yeah. The end of the project, but that should be elevated to the KFC office. Probably will be reviewed.
Are you going to be required to wind the pavement on Route 55?
Yes, sir. Yep, if you look at, if you look at where Bishoff Lane is right now, just to give you perspective, we're probably going to be about 75 feet to the north, so going up to hill, actually, yeah, down, down. Because we'll be coming in at a right angle, so that entrance will be pushed down slightly, and then we'll come into our site, and then we'll start to make turn into the accessible. Just wanted to give the board an update. So I think with our next submission, we are going to tie all of this together with the DOD report, murder and landscaping, we'll hopefully do a last comment letter. Maybe tonight, I just want to get any input from the board before we make that final push, getting a complete package, so we can have our public hearing taken care of.
Are you still doing the stormwater practice in the center of the site? It's like a grass swale or something?
Yeah, we're doing some filtering. We see lakes in the center of the site, and there's a tangential issue if you're going to have a lower, a lower section.
And so that lower section, what is that, like a stormwater pond or stormwater wetland or?
Stormwater pond.
Okay. And you did all the testing as far as understanding where the water table is?
Yeah, and we actually did it during the rainy season, so that's why the numbers pushed us to the lower lot. Because of the soil conditions, because of the amount of groundwater, impervious coverage, we're starting from 54 units down to 40. So this is real.
Yeah, right. Where did we start? We were up at 88 or something, or over 100?
90. Great.
I should have started.
My only comment would be, I'd like to, I think I made this comment the last one, is I'd like to see a robust planting plan. It's our town center, and so, oh, yeah, there we go. Nice.
So there's also bike stations and UV, EV, EV charge stations?
We did a little EV action there. We did some bike stands, short term, long term, you know, to show the concept. We tried to hit some of the key items raised in Dan's last letter to keep you on board. But yeah, the intent is to provide those amenities.
You still have, on the plans, I see the sports court, you have a playground. The attorney asked me to inquire about an easement on the, what would be the south, the southwest corner, where there's an intersection of Bishoff onto the, to the property lot.
I think you might have a utility easement there now, but there is a portion of the existing Bishoff pavement, but it looks like maybe it's a T-type turnaround or something there that encroaches in on the last lot that it serves. So.
Details. That, and I don't, and I don't see elevations for the buildings or colors or anything.
Yeah, we previously submitted just a mock-up, but now that we know that this is real, and, you know, our comments are getting down there, we'll throw a splash of color and we'll get you a full interview.
Okay. Really would like all of Dan's comments answered before we schedule a public hearing, obviously, so we don't run into the problem that we've run into here in the past. Anything else you want to talk to us about?
I just wanted to get any initial input.
Dan?
Craig? I think the two owners at the end of Bishoff might need easements. You may have to grant them easements since part of Bishoff is going to remain, part of that private road is going to remain on the property, it appears, correct? From what I could see.
Isn't the road going to be dedicated to the town?
Yes. The roads will be town roads.
So if the road's dedicated to the town, would they need an easement over it?
It's where it encroaches back onto the property.
Yeah.
It's not going to be a John Rhodes.
Current Bishoff comes in, and then it's like a turnaround right up in here that comes back onto the property.
I see.
It's going to be a very wide road that gets skinny as it goes through these private homes, private driveway to the rear.
Yeah, they're going to need, they're going to need easement to be able to access that part of their road.
Yeah, I think their consent is going to be needed too. So I, that's going to be a legal challenge.
Have they worked on that? Have you worked on that?
Our attorney's been dealing with.
The owners.
Credit. We'll take it to the next level, and make sure we have those agreements.
Anything else?
I think, though, you know, have your attorney call me. I think that that's a big part of this, the feasibility of the project before, you know, you go any further, is getting that access issue resolved.
I suppose if there's an issue, they'll come to the public hearing.
Well, I'd like to have that.
I'm not asking you that. Sorry?
I'd like to have that addressed.
Yeah.
Yep.
That way it's done.
Yeah. I'm not sure how they could stop here. You know, if you own the lot, it's just, you know, it's kind of like Green Haven and Solar, where we had to deal with the neighbor, and there was an easement. We have to iron that out.
But in this, in this situation, you have a, you could bring a cul-de-sac through to a town, to a town road. You could bring a cul-de-sac to the rear, I guess, with the town, you know, with a town road to spec, but it's going to be at what cost? You know, it's going to be an added cost.
Is that, is, is there driveway on your client's parcel? I mean, it looks like it's on their, on his parcel.
A portion is on ours, a portion is on each individual parcel.
So there's some kind of agreement that allows him to use it now?
And there's also a gourd in between our parcel and their parcel.
A what?
A gourd. There's an area unknown.
Yeah, that's.
Undetermined.
Undetermined ownership, let's say.
I know.
So, yeah, that's a bit of a challenge.
Get out the togoes.
But I don't think that there was a very good agreement in place, to your point. Normally, you know, that's something that's been learned over time, that when you have private roads and shared driveways, you have to have a good agreement in place. Unfortunately, the town is probably, there are a number of them that don't have that.
Yeah. Oh, I didn't see this. You did. Okay. I'm sorry.
Right. Separately packaged.
Separately packaged, yeah.
And we'll pick up.
No, that's, yeah. I like the stone fascia there. That looks sharp. What type of siding?
A natural earth cone, just kind of rubber gum, offset in color, kind of breaking. Something you see, little standing seam metal roof to change things up in portions.
Metal roof, you said?
In some sections.
In some sections?
Yeah.
And then, hardy board be considered rather than vinyl?
It could be consideration, but we'll talk it over with the applicant.
That's great. Yeah. Or a higher quality vinyl, you know, rather than?
You are going to be close to the road, so it will be visually present.
I like the, what do you call those? Widows?
The thing on the top, the dormers?
Kugel.
Kugel.
Kugel, yeah. And the dormers. No, really, I like the lines of the building very.
No, kugel is right.
I mean, it looks, looks sharp. Yeah. Yeah, you could, you could also, you know, you have the retention pond there, and you could, they used to use those to, when the husband went out to sea.
Yeah, widows watch.
Make sure he came back.
Widows watch.
Widows watch?
You better just with the fire department and all, or?
No, we haven't, but I think we can.
The fire advisory boards talked about this a number of times, actually.
I don't, have they issued any time?
No, no. What happens is, normally, I'll get comments from that meeting, and I'll put it into my review letter. So there might actually be something in there, maybe Knox boxes, some other stuff that they were mentioning, but, you know, I think that they were pretty satisfied with access around the buildings to be able to fight from a number of angles. To dig. So, you know, we'll probably end up going back to them with the next submittal.
Okay. And we'll clean up some of the line work so it's clear.
Looks like you're making good progress.
Yeah. Good, good-looking elevations, that really, that's nice to see. How did, any summary of this? I mean, I saw a B and then a C.
Well, I mean, to be honest with you, with the 48 unit lot count, we're probably a little bit under the threshold for the left turn lane, to be honest.
Okay.
But I think if you, and the board actually brought this up around 2, 3 weeks ago, if you look at, you know, the, this is the gate, this is the start of Town Center.
Right.
And the secondary access. So although the volume cannot be there now, it will be there in the future.
Okay.
So from a planning standpoint.
Sure.
Smart play, everything out, with the left turn lane there.
You also spoke about banking, and the board, if you want to explain that to the board, banking parking for future use?
Right. If you look at the Town Center's factors on, J and O Street Parking, so we try to accommodate that with the town road aspect of this project. So if you look at the overall parking that is required for our unit count, we are having, but again, we're incorporating that on-street parking concept. There, we show we can meet our parking if the board would like to see bank parking. Obviously, we could shave that out, and we've got to accommodate that. I think what we did from an impervious standpoint is full build-out condition, design stormwater, and then if the board wants to come back and have some more green, then we can accommodate that.
This is the first opportunity for a new Town Center street, which has, there's a detail in our code that shows the streetscape that's, that was always intended.
Yes.
So that provided on-street parking and curbing and sidewalks and trees, and that's, that's what they're trying to create here.
Yeah, I think it would be very helpful, considering this fact, when you do your elevations and you have your colors for the building, within that landscaping and trees and sidewalks and the, you have the playground and the court, more for presentation rather than for, you know, calculations and layout.
Yeah, so what was on the site plan while on our landscape, if you can, without a colored landscape plan, so you can actually see the green top and see where, let's say, potential banked parking areas could be, and how we consider to go.
The EV stations, the light posts, and that, because I'd like to see that more for presentation on the screen rather than.
On paper.
Paper copies. Paper copies. So don't feel compelled to, you know, print off color copies, you know, in quantity unless you, you know, the board prefers it. But my my suggestion is for the planning, for the the public hearing, to have a nice presentation for the public.
Makes perfect sense.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have a?
No, I think they've been moving along very nicely.
CAC, anything from Mr. Schwark? No? Okay.
All right, good deal.
We're good? Thank you, Brian. So the.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Donald Capellino, Capellino Rosalindigan. We're attorneys for JSM, Elena State Subdivision. I'm glad to finally come here and give you the background on this, so you have some idea of what has been going on. There's been a lot of activity.
So are you Mr. You're?
I'm Donald Capellino.
Oh, the owner of the property?
No, no.
No?
I'm the attorney.
Oh, the attorney.
JSM.
Yes.
And JSM is the owner of the property, and it's called Elena Estates. It's a subdivision, 16 units. We have been through this many times. This project is supposed to be served by water with water and sewer services from the Dutch County Water and Wastewater Authority, and it has been from the beginning. And we were involved in a lot of those negotiations, dealing with all of that, when Bridget Barkley was, she was the executive director, and we dealt with her on a number of things. What happened was, in 2017, the problem was we had gotten high quotes for fixing the Plum Court pump station. There's never been a water problem. They have enough water. It's never been an issue. The Dutchess County Legislature has approved the expansion of the water and sewer districts. Everything has been had been going well. Around 2017, we actually engaged Dan Stokosa to go and look at the problem because it seemed a bit expensive to do that, and they looked at it and they came up with an engineering solution. My client had already paid somewhere in the neighborhood of $23,000 at least, that's what I saw, for to the Dutch County Water and Wastewater Authority, besides hiring their own engineers to go in and come up with a solution for it. The problem with that pump station is that there's four-inch pipe that goes to a two-inch pipe, and then it goes back into a four-inch pipe, and there's, because of that, pumps have been, and Brian can handle can explain that more clearly than I can.
You're doing great.
I'm probably the wrong guy to be talking about that. But they came up with a solution and saying, well, you've got to get rid of that four-inch pipe. You can do that with proper pump placement, you can do it, and you can blow away the sludge built up, and it should be able to handle it. You're having problems now, pumps breaking down, and it's a regular problem. So they came up with the solution, it's very practical, and the Dutch County Water and Wastewater Authority had hired Rich Rania to do the review. He came up with a $130,000 cost, and from that $130, Bridget said, well, we have management fees on top of that, let's say 178 to get it done. And my client agreed to pay $100,000, up to $100,000, would pay half the cost, up to 100. And everything seemed to be going fine. We did, before we even entered into that 2021 memorandum of understanding with Dutch County Water and Wastewater Authority, we had a purchaser sign a contract. Everything was moving along well. There was a change in administration, and because of the change in administration, they decided that they needed a different solution. And the solution went from $178,000 to $564,000. That $564,000 solution created a problem, and we've been negotiating with both the purchaser of the property who's going to build it out, and at the same time, talking to the Dutch County Water and Wastewater Authority, seeing what could be done, so that we weren't going to pay half of that, if it made the project not feasible. Well, we went through this for a long time, and it took us just before the holidays in 2023, we, actually, let me step back. I went to a closing on, I think it was August 5th, and.
I heard about that.
With them, and we went went to the closing and found that Saturday before, the purchaser was not satisfied with really working through a solution with the Dutch County Water and Wastewater Authority. Eventually, when we, the Water and Wastewater Authority came around and we did negotiate a solution, but just before then, the purchaser said, I'm withdrawn. We tried then for all during the holidays, before the holidays in 2023, to bring them back together again. And it feels a little bit like the Middle East, I was trying to do it, I didn't make it. So I, we then, but we found another purchaser. They signed a contract. My client signed the contract. We have the down payment, and we would like to move along. No one would like to move this through, probably, I may want it more than my client to get it over with. But it really, it's really something, we think this is a good project. I know that Hudson Land Design has worked through all of the details on this and, you know, frankly, made good improvements to the whole project. We have all the details down to the panic to the point, we were ready to close, and we've been ready to close for some time. So all of these, we're hopeful that if we could just get one more term, we will do our level best to get everything finished with, and when it happens, you'll be the first ones to know. We really appreciate your patience and understanding with this. This is, we think, a good project. We, it's going to help the taxpayers because somebody's going to have to pay for this. My client is paying for, you know, a good portion of what it's going to be done here. So I think it's a good thing. We think it's good for economic development, I think it's good for the town, and it's good for the taxpayers, too.
You have a.
Respectfully request one more.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Appreciate it. I also received two letters. They're in your packets there. First time I've ever received a letter from a county executive, although he was the assistant.
Right.
That's okay.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll let the assistant write the law. I'm sure he ran it by the county executive. So. So the county executive wrote a letter requesting that we honor the extension as well, and there's also a letter from Dutchess County Water and Waste explaining the issues that occurred on their behalf. When the board's ready, I'd like to hear any comments that you might have. Anything from you, Craig, or Dan?
No, I've been in touch with Mr. Capellino. And his office, and I know when he says that he wants this to close more than his client, I believe him because he's been passionate about getting in touch with us and making sure, you know, we've been informed. And I asked him to come tonight. He's here. Even was able to get those letters from the county and from DCWWA, which is pretty impressive. So I would ask that, you know, or I would, I would concur in the recommendation for an extension in this case.
Did the water department lower their cost? Is it still 564?
I think they're going to go forward with the decision that was made. I think the administrative decision that was made was not to solve the problem with the present one, but in fact, to redo it and put it in, you know, a, we prefer to do it as the Cadillac version, but I think that that may be, that's a bit cynical. I mean, I think he had his reasons for doing it. He's an engineer, the new executive director, and he wants the bigger one to take care of all of the potential things that may come up. And so he's he's asked for that.
Was there a negotiation on the cost of that more expensive remedy?
It still has to be put out the bid, but the point is that the cost that we are going to incur is a good portion, but it is not half as was asked at the beginning. And that sort of scared away our other purchaser.
Yeah.
But we were, but we were working on with them and trying to come up with solutions with how the bonds are done and things of that nature. And we, we have come to a solution so that we can provide service to eight units immediately, and then they'll go out and do all the work, and then the next eight units will be, they can be constructed, they just won't be connected and get a CO until the upgrade is done. And whatever modifications that are made during that, you know, our, our client and the purchaser are not going to have to bear, you know, direct cost of any of that. That's $100,000 is going to still be put up by my client as part of that. So that is, that's part of the deal.
So they won't be granted a CO until they get the the improvements to the pump station, correct?
So you're going to phase the construction?
The second date, right? The first date, Ken?
The pump station is working adequately in the opinion of the Dutch County Water and Wastewater Authority to handle the first eight units.
Okay.
They were, they were suspicious of the second eight units. They're not getting a lot of flow. We believe that if we follow, you know, the Stokosa design and the Rania approved design, that it would more than have handled that, all 16 units and perhaps then some. But they're building for the future. We understand, and we're, we're at a point where we just want to do, do this and get this over with and stop the bleeding on our end.
Understood.
And if I may comment on a fact that exists now. I live in Dalton Farms. And they, they changed over all of the meters to a wireless meter reading system. And I was told that there isn't a relationship between the increase in water and sewer because right now, there's approximately a 20 to 25% increase on our bills. For example, a three-bedroom, four, three to four-bedroom home, the, the bill every trimester, because they, they're going from three annual bills to four, runs each household anywhere from $450 to $650 right now, three times a year. My neighbor, him and his wife, it's around 400 every four months currently. It was about 25% cheaper prior to the the meter changes. So this will also distribute that cost and help improve, you know, the amount of money that, you know, it'll decrease the amount of money, water and waste, by this getting developed as well. At least, that's our, our hope or assumption. We'll see.
There's also the regular bond that you pay down each year. I think it's being paid off in.
Right.
This, this, this next.
This year.
Yeah, so hopefully, your annual bond charge will either go down or be eliminated as they, if they have to, if they're going to rip another bond out and then for other improvements that they're giving or upgrades to the system, it should be significantly less than the acquisition bond that was involved, I think, in 2004.
Right.
So that's a positive as well for you.
Very good. So I just thought the board would want to know that as well, and thank you for that last bit. Yeah, it'll be a, you referred to it as an improvement bond as opposed to an acquisition bond.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, that was discussed at a public hearing, but not as clearly. Thank you. Anything else?
No, I mean, basically, based on some of this new information we got, we prepared a resolution at the last minute, so you really haven't had a good time to digest it, but I.
Would you like me to read it?
If you want to take a minute and read it.
Yeah, read it to the record. Read it for the record?
The one, the one difference is that we went 91 days, which would bring us to the June date for the meeting of this planning board, just in the event.
I love the open, I don't like the bad.
Wasn't there a closing schedule for May? Is that, is that accurate?
We're, the contracts were signed and completely finished, because we have one question, we took care of on March 15th, and it's due 75 days later. It's within, it's within that contract. And, you know, that's the last thing. We hope that it's going quickly. Everybody's trying to be fast on this. And, and as Stokosa's office have been working with that to try to get that moving along. They've already exchanged a lot of information.
Is there financing involved, outside financing?
Cash flow.
Cash flow, okay. That's good.
I have a comment. I just, I'm inclined to move forward with the extension. I just want to say, and I've said this in the past, I don't think we should be making judgments based on what's going on in the background with a real estate deal. That's, it sets a dangerous precedent when the board, a government agency, gets involved or makes decisions based on residential transactions that have nothing to do with the public. At any point in this process, the applicant could have just paid the money and then worked out a deal, however he needed to work out a deal, with the prospective buyers. That has nothing to do with us. We have no influence over it. We can't do anything about it. And so I appreciate that it's a good project. It is a nicely designed subdivision, provides housing, but I, this whole discussion about, you know, why we should, you know, the rationale for why it's late and why we should, you know, you know, keep extending it because we need to wait for a closing to happen, is really not our concern, it should never be our concern.
If I may, but what has happened here was, the issue has always been with the Dutch County Water and Wastewater Authority and coming up with what was originally supposed to be taken care of. We had everything finished. My client paid our engineer and paid their engineer to review it. We had a deal, and the deal changed on us. And when it changed, the number was completely different, and, you know, and my client had to pay.
I definitely appreciate that fact. I get that you had a difficult time negotiating a deal with the water department. We kind of hope you do that before you get to the point that we give a conditioning approval, that we, that you work out whatever arrangements you need or come close to working out those arrangements. I hope that you appreciate that we, as a, as a board, do not want to set a precedent where any applicant can now come forward to us and say, if you guys could just hold on until, you know, I don't have a prospective buyer right now, the market isn't very good, can you wait for us? That's a very dangerous precedent for us to be setting for future applicants.
Well, that's a point well taken, but in this particular case, we had, 2021, we had an amended and restated. twenty-one, we had an amended and restated memorandum of understanding, which with the Dutch County Water and Wastewater Authority, which was sufficient under any circumstances. But then what happened was they then changed the cost of the system from a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars to five hundred and sixty-four thousand, five, I think it's five sixty-four, five hundred. And that was, and so we then scrambled all of that time to try to come to an arrangement with them to not require us to pay half of that because it made the project no longer feasible. We couldn't sell homes with those kinds of prices, and even though we had approvals. So in the end, we did get them to listen, to work out arrangements, and everybody has a solution here. We're not, we're not being
You know, I said I'm inclined to move this forward. I just wanted to make the point for the board's sake and for future applicants.
I understand. Thank you very much.
So if I, if I may, Alena State Subdivision, the tax idea is listed here. Whereas the project sponsor applicant, JSM Upstate Properties, Inc., has been granted preliminary subdivision plat approval for, on September eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen, and conditional final subdivision plat approval at the October eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen by the Town of Beekman Planning Board. And whereas New York State town law dictates that conditional subdivision approval is valid for one hundred and eighty days after granting of the resolution of such approval or April sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen. And whereas the applicant has stated that they have diligently worked to satisfy conditions of subdivision plat approval but have been delayed by matters out of their control. And whereas the applicant requested the planning board grant an additional extension of approval in order to satisfy the remaining conditions of subdivision plat approval. And whereas the planning board previously granted extensions of approval through March twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. And whereas the engineer and attorney for the applicant has been working with the Dutchess County Water and Waste Authority, as evidenced by correspondence from Dutchess County Water and Waste Authority dated March twentieth, twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-four, and from the county, from the Assistant County Executive dated March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. The town engineer and town attorney satisfied conditions of the conditional final approval. And whereas the planning board has determined that there has been no change in circumstances that would require a reapproval of the subdivision plat. And whereas the planning board further determines that there have been no changes in circumstances warranting a reopening of SECR and that the negative declaration shall remain in full force and effective and cover this extension. And therefore, be it resolved that the planning board resolves to grant one additional conditional ninety-day extension of conditional subdivision plat approval through June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. And it be further resolved that all conditions of the October eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen resolution, with exception to those related to the moderately priced housing provision, shall be fulfilled prior to the signing of this plat by the chairman of the planning board. With the added condition that the payment due from JSM to the Town of Beekman pursuant to JSM's March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two agreement with the town shall have been paid.
I'll make a motion to accept this resolution.
Okay. I second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night. It was nice meeting you. Okay, so, okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, very good. Thank you. All right, pre-application, Hittorah subdivision. Hi, Brian.
Welcome back. Many pieces of property on Baker Road. This is just up the, just up the street on the other side from Mr. Bruce's, the Ferris House piece. We have a lot of road fronts on Baker. We're right across from High Ridge, the lower section. On this map here, I tried to indicate sensitive areas. We're in the R ninety zone, I'm not sure which plus or minus. What the applicant is looking to do is to close townhomes. So if you look at the code in the R ninety zone, townhomes are permanent, it's reduced. If you look at how we establish density and townhome criteria in the R ninety, there's a certain amount of guidance. Reaching out if we can, we suggested to put it together, let's get it through the board, let's talk about it. So we're here tonight to discuss the applicant's request to close. So looking at the map, it's a larger scale, shady areas are steep slopes, here's a fifteen percent. And then we also have some, so if they're trying to street corridor, they kind of come through the property with some little plastic lanterns.
Is this one? Or Baker?
We tried to show those in the light hatch area and in the buffer around it. And what we tried to do is any area that's not disturbed, put in conservation, so it is protected. And then we tried to clump density where the flatter areas were. So looking at this concept, we have a small area just down the road from High Ridge, there's a flat area here, and then it kind of drops off. Parcel falls from north to south, elevation wise. So we have a couple clusters of townhomes in this area. The way we did these townhomes was you can, they have garage in them, and then you park two parks in front of each individual townhome. And then we tried to have some parking, there's a park up to the sides and in the center.
If I may, so each, each one of these pods of three, it represents this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that's, that's the, the product to see.
So same kind of concept. We tried to break up, pitch features, clean around the city, and roof treatments, and not have these long massive blocks of townhomes, but try to cluster them in groups of three, groups of six. So in the front, we have little clubs of three, and in the back, we have, since we're more protected and we're up the hill, we do threes and sixes. But basically trying to, trying to preserve all of our sensitive areas. So again, we have a couple units here, and we have access that would come into the property across this ravine, and we come up into this uphill area here. Circles of bottom of seastorm water, we would have maintenance in and around the townhome areas. This project will be served by onsite central water and sewer. So we probably have a kind of well field here, there'd be a water storage tank, pressure and firefighting, fire storage. And then down, down toward this lower area here, we're probably doing some kind of NVR plant that would treat sewage and bore.
Where will it be discharged to?
To the existing ditch line.
Going where?
Going down the site where it actually, you know, a lot of people
It'll come down the ravine as a natural flow? So you're going to be adding a lot of water?
Well, it'll be, it'll be permanent by near today, D C.
I understand. Because I happen to be at the bottom of Baker, well, where that ravine comes down, it actually comes down to my field. And right now, it's, it's a mess. A lot of water has come, I don't know if you've seen it.
It's, it's like
I know. A lot. It's taken a good part of my field right now.
I don't want to answer that.
Huh?
I don't want to answer that.
I know. Maybe I need to recuse myself because it could be a problem.
Obviously, when a project is even followed D C's stormwater
Sure.
If you oversight from New York State to E C, it's But the idea is, whatever generated on site to capture, treat, discharge, clear, then we got it.
How many units are you talking about?
There's, there's, there's some old roads in there. There's some large fanies in there. So there's some areas that have old roads and some areas that don't. And what I'm trying to do is keep any kind of element off of fifty percent there. So basically, anywhere we see a shady area is fifty percent there. But located there.
Pretty much the whole lot is wooded, right?
And with this sidewalk throughout, there'd be an E C center, a house, pool, sport court. And you have that located. Kind of in some area here, a little more dense, we have to, we probably dislocate there trying to avoid too much damage.
So how many units are we talking about?
Right on this plane you're seeing here, I think it's a hundred and thirty-eight.
Does that exceed the density requirement?
Well, that's what we're talking about because if you look into the R ninety, it suggests townhomes. It doesn't specifically speak to how we design townhomes. So
How to design a townhome?
Doesn't speak to a density requirement in the R ninety.
Establishing the count.
I mean, doesn't that apply to all the different types of residential uses? Whatever the account is, the count for that?
Yeah, I'd have to look into it more at this point, you know. In general, the way that these pre-application things work is that there's not an escrow set up, so I don't exactly do a technical review. Listening into this one, I've already had a pre-application meeting with the next applicant, who'll all be leaving right after this. But, you know, so I'm just trying to take a look at what's being proposed. And then we can, we can certainly work towards a better understanding of how our code is trying to make this work in terms of density.
So I personally don't have anything to say until, until you've made that step with Dan and Craig, so they can look at this.
So with most boards, sometimes they ask, you know, it's a formalization of having escrow established so that we can work with them, I didn't know town people would be required. If we decided escrow account, and we got to check off and start our, our talks with
It's a significant project, plus there's traffic issues involved here, I'm sure, on that road and other things that I would need to, I would need to hear from Dan and Craig.
Yeah, I think one thing that would pop out right away also would be knowing the Fire Advisory Board, they'd probably be looking for some sort of secondary way out of there.
And then there's the C A C who'll have to weigh in because there's quite a few steep slopes here, I would, I would imagine, I don't know.
Yeah, you might just stream, too. I don't know where that is, but there's a ravine out, yeah, there's a ravine that kind of runs out through here, so.
It comes down to Beekman Road, and where my field is. It comes all the way down. It's a mess right now. A lot of trees have come down.
And I have another question, so, from, to my applicant, if we set an escrow account tonight or an amount?
I think that makes sense. I don't know if Craig had suggested an amount or anything, but, yeah.
You know, I have comments. I'm very concerned about the density. It seems like a lot of units in an area that's very environmentally sensitive. It's fully wooded, has lots of steep slopes, even the slopes that are not fifteen percent are not, they're, it's not flat, it's not a flat area. It's got, you know, to be able to achieve, you're going to have to do a lot of major disturbance and grading to be able to cut those, all those units in. We're told all the time that our ordinance is confusing, broken, not giving us enough guidance. I'm sure that there's a table in there that provides the density for that, for that zone, for R ninety zone. It just doesn't specify a different density between the different types of residential uses. So whatever the density is, that's the density. I don't think that's confusing at all. It's meant to be, we mean to have this density in this zone. Now, if you want to use townhouses, you want to do a single family, you want to do, you know, that's, you know, you can, but you have to meet the density requirements. And clearly, there's a reason because the zone was in R ninety zone because of the fact that it's out, further out from the center. It's in our rural areas, in our wooded areas, and, you know.
We had to explore that option because the fallback is to do conventional subdivision. It was just right now exploring options, maybe do that as a right count for this piece, but it's only subject to review and access, things like that. So it was just for, just to introduce it to the board, establish an escrow account and see how they're working with this.
And Dalton Farms has pre-existing townhomes that could give you a sort of a benchmark?
I'm not against townhomes, and I'm not against clustering
Yeah.
development to help protect the environment. I just think that, I'm just giving you my opinion, that's why you're here, right? It just seems like a lot of density to me. It seems like a lot of disturbance to the environment, and I'd be very concerned about not only just the steep slopes, but the wetlands, the watercourses, the old growth forest. I'd like to know what size these trees are. I'm learning more and more about the importance of old growth forests in our, you know, there's very few remaining. And, you know, they serve environmentally, they serve a biological habitat ecosystem, important one. So, you know, I just, and then, yeah, I think Fae's initial issue with the sewer, you know, having lived on a property that's below other properties that were developed, I can tell you that there were impacts that were, you know.
And that's not a stream, it's a ravine.
Yeah.
It's not a stream.
Yeah.
So you're creating something that's not there.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting that you can't somehow mitigate that fact. I, you know, I know you could probably design it, but that's what we want to keep our eye on, that there's no additional stormwater coming off the site, there's no sewage affluent, that we're not drawing down the aquifer. You know, these are all the things I would be concerned with when you're proposing what looks to be a very high-density development.
So how many people would fit in that proposed space? How many bedrooms?
There's, there are mixes between twos and threes.
Twos and threes? So it's a mix of two and three, and you said a hundred and
Hundred and thirty-eight.
Hundred and thirty-eight. That's a, that's a lot of people in that. How many acres is that lot?
Hundred and four.
Hundred and four acres. The Dalton Farms, seven hundred acres, three hundred and fifty homes, I believe. I can't, don't quote me on that. That's, that's a lot, that's, that's dense. I concur with Rob's feelings about that.
Yeah, we're here tonight for input.
Yep.
If you did, if you did houses, you wouldn't have to do the sewer system. And how many units do you think you could get there? Fifty-five houses. But on private septics?
Which is still tight, because the soils
Right. Right. Right.
Subject to investigation.
Right. Have you tested the water there?
This is just preliminary.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, we don't have service.
Okay.
Where do we see this going? And then we make decisions. So first step was input, and then second was setting an escrow, just to kind of roll the concepts with you.
Yeah, we want to understand, you know, your rights as well, so that's part of why you need to move forward in that direction.
Should I, do you want to set an amount, or do you want to?
Yeah, Craig, Craig was suggesting 5,000.
Okay. That's a high idea.
And you can contact Alitha with that.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So the other pre-application, thanks. Enjoy yourself. The last pre-application for discussion, another subdivision, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce the, how would you pronounce the name?
Versus?
Uh, Sa- Satch.
Sed, Sedge Property Solutions.
One more time, please?
Is it Sedge Property Solutions?
Sedge Property Solutions.
Satchit, okay. Yep, thank you.
Would you like to see the?
Please, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. It would be really awesome to be in touch with the company.
No, this is great.
Yes.
That's fine.
It's on Baker also, yes.
Yes.
Would you like to come here and explain it?
Or?
Oh, sure.
If you'd like, yeah. You can also, please.
Yep.
Okay, yeah. So essentially, it's a 17 acre?
Where is this, by the way?
About a half a mile down from Delphina. So if we're coming off of Beakman Road, it's maybe about, maybe mile in.
This is Beakman to Quake Road.
Yeah, right, so if you're coming off of that, off of Baker, it's about a mile, right? Mile, mile, maybe not, or two miles in?
Yeah.
On the left-hand side.
Something like that, right.
So, excuse me.
I'm still not, I'm still not picturing it. Yeah, so there's Baker.
So it's like in the middle, we have the area?
Well, here's, here's, this is Beakman. That's Martin, this is Baker. So is, it's down here?
Yeah, so do you got, so where's, where's Delphina? That development is on Delphina? It's about, about a mile south, going towards Beakman, on the right-hand side.
So.
Let's see if we can find it.
Who is the adjoining property owner, do you know?
Maybe an address?
There's a, right, there is a single-family property right next to the house, right next to the land.
Next to the land, right.
And then there's vacant land right next to it.
You wouldn't have an address, would you?
Oh, no, I have the lot number.
Owner and applicant, Beakman Heights LLC.
That's my, yeah, that's my property.
That's your property.
Do we have the lot number, the 72?
Yes, it's on there, it's 720.
Yeah.
250.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's better.
Thank you.
Zoom in, or whatever you want.
I touched something.
What's the address there?
I'm sorry?
Give me the address.
We don't have a.
Yes.
Oh, you're giving me parcel.
Yes, parcel, sorry.
This is individual houses, not a townhouse.
Correct, yeah, single-family homes. It's a 17 acre parcel, triangular parcel, you see. We want to subdivide in eight homes, eight lots, keep within the two-acre zoning.
Oh, you're, I'm trying to figure out where you are. There's the pond. This is the site here?
Correct.
Okay, you're up there. All right.
Fortunately, there aren't really major grading issues.
Good.
Which is good, yes. No water, no, no other issues to, to really deal with, no wetlands, none of that, so.
This is high ridge here, so you're, you're south of where this guy is talking about.
Well, you are just right across the street from him.
From?
From the last applicant.
Oh.
Yeah.
I bet he bought the 26.1.
26 acre, yes.
He bought the 26 right across.
Which is a problem.
Oh, he's on the other side of the road.
He's literally right across.
I don't know why.
He bought the 26, and I got the 17.
Oh, wait a minute. Going up, you're on the left side. And he's on the right?
He's on the right, yeah.
And he's dealing with the ravines?
So you're, he's on the same side as Mr. Ferris?
Yes.
That's what I thought, but isn't, you're on the same side as Ferris?
Well, Ferris owned that side, too, but we bought that from, well, whoever owned it bought it from Ferris, so we're on the left-hand side. So on the side that he's on, there's houses.
Major grading issues, too.
Yeah, there's major grading, but there's houses south of him, right? And going up north, Delphina, which was the biggest development that I've seen so far within the area, was there, I think they did, like, they had over 50 acres, they did close to about 18, 20 homes there, or something like that.
They already did that?
Yes, yes.
I know where you're going now.
In New York, what's the size of your property?
Well, what the idea is, is two-acre lots, 4,000 above ground, and with unfinished or to finish basements, depending on, you know, the person's preference.
Preference, and, and how many homes on?
Eight homes.
Eight homes.
Home, or two acres on?
Every two acres.
On the common, so.
It is two acres on.
Yes, this is what we're actually, it's, it's a rough, a rough mixture of what we're trying to do.
Yeah, that's.
And it looks like there should be plenty of room, and ingress and egress.
The density is appropriate.
Right.
Nicely laid out.
This, this would need, well, well, my first observation is, wouldn't you need a way out? Two, two, two ways. Yeah, so, Dan's not here, you're gonna need to do the same thing in terms of escrow.
Okay.
All right, to have this reviewed.
Okay.
I don't want to, I don't want to punch holes in anything without
Right.
You talking to the, the town engineer, but, don't they need a way out?
They have a cul-de-sac.
Yeah, that's sufficient.
How, 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 how deep is that? How long is the road?
That road is probably going to be, I want to say.
It's acres to, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
That's okay. You'll work that out.
You'll, you'll be there.
I think you need to have like a paper street to the ne, if this lot is vacant, you have to have the ability to connect to it in the future.
Because it's owned by someone.
No, only in the future. If that, if that's developed, they can connect.
But they have their own egress. There's a private road there.
Oh, okay.
Because this is a, it's a large parcel, right?
Yeah, they have their own private road.
So if they ever develop that, I don't know, there's somewhere in the, in the regs about having a paper street that would allow the future connection of a future subdivision.
Okay.
Check that, I, I could be wrong, but I was, I, we did a subdivision on my property, and they, the town had us put that in. They never get developed, they actually built the development next door, and the development next door put a right-of-way to their cul-de-sac. So if the fire, if the firemen ever want to make that, have someone make that road, it facilitates fire protection. That's what you're talking about, two ways now.
Yeah, you know, but I, I see, you know, like at Teconic, Teconic Hills, they go up and around and back out the same entrance. I was actually thinking about Shane's development on that, that mountain, where they wanted, they wanted the trucks to be able to, they wanted evacuation from two areas.
Yeah.
Were my confusing issues.
No, you're right.
I am right.
One in and one out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I, I don't understand, you know, a cul-de-sac is a way out, but same entrance.
Well, that, that's because there's no other roads on the other side, it's all in.
Understood, yeah. And the same exists with Teconic Hills. They, they, they go up and around. So that's why I don't want to really get into all of that, that's more for the town engineer to look at with you.
Right.
So you're.
So that's just like, you know, the density and the layout of how we, this is, this, like, so this is the proposed subdivision lot, and then the surveyor and the architect that I worked with, they kind of just put everything all together. Back here is just like the, the outline of the homes. So we have like the layout and so on and so forth. So we have some proposed full plans, obviously, these are not approved as yet, but we have the idea of what we're looking to build in those lots. So what I wanted to just basically illustrate mostly is how we want to subdivide the lots, show how we would be able to create the road to come through the homes and out the homes, obviously.
Egress, right.
And show you that the, the lot sizes would meet the zoning requirement.
No, you've done a lot of work here.
Yeah. I feel bad, I, I should read all of this, shouldn't I?
No.
I need, I need maybe a martini.
It would be interesting to read, of course.
Yeah, yeah.
He's done it.
I'll tell you, you're prepared.
Yes. I think this is the most I've ever seen.
Yeah, I've never seen such.
It's a very nice presentation.
Yeah, we just would like to know if we obviously can get the town's blessing.
Right. Is there a recommended escrow for, for this, so we can have it?
It's based on the number of lots, it's based on a few different things.
Okay.
The last, the last one, you know, to give you a guide, you know, but this is, it's a different, it's a different project.
Right.
Are you anticipating the need of any variances?
No, no. We're in the, the eighth subdivision lot, well within two acres.
It's more in keeping with, with our towns.
Correct, because initially, I, I was looking to do one acres, but then when I realized we weren't, that, that was the old zoning of the R 5, I realized, you know, you might as well just, you know, when in Rome, right, so do the R 90s.
Yeah.
Run into that density issue.
Italian-Americans, all three, that goes well at Rome.
Right.
So.
So all wooded?
Yes, so it would be two-by-four, shoot rock, maybe some.
No, I mean, is that the, the property?
Property wooded.
Is all wooded?
Yeah, no trees.
There's no, um, dense.
He means it's dense, low, populated with trees.
Yeah, yes.
One thing that, that, we have wetlands laws, steep slope and forestry laws in our town. We, we would like the trees delineated on the property, the existing ones over, how many inches is it? I forgot.
Eight?
Is it eight inches or 12? Yeah, I think eight is code.
What if, if it's a lot of dead trees on the property?
Yeah, it's mostly the viable trees, not, not thatch or weed. I mean, would it apply to locusts as well?
Yeah.
I think anything, yeah, any, any type of thriving tree.
I mean, just follow the requirements of the, that's all.
Right.
And whatever the surveys, whatever we require in the survey, that's what we're looking to see.
But, yeah, I think if you approach Alitha and, in, in town hall, she'll help you out with escrow amounts, then you'll sit down with the town engineer, and he'll review everything, prepare a comment letter and that sort of thing, and we'll be more prepared to comment once you've, you've made that step with them, started the application process.
Perfect.
Yeah. I look forward to seeing it.
Yeah, my only, I mean, and this is why you're here.
Yeah.
My only concern is that it's all wooded, it's all trees, so I think we're gonna want to see a plan that minimizes to the extent needed to build the homes.
Correct.
You know, to not sort of clear-cut the whole thing.
Right, right, yeah, right.
And it's going to be a pain in the neck for the builder or the developer. It's going to require more attention to detail.
Sure.
It's easier to just knock down a lot and clear, but we're, you know.
It's got to keep aesthetically.
Yeah, and I think your customers will appreciate that.
They will.
When they go to buy the place.
You've got 50, 60, 70-year-old trees, even probably older in that area, I would imagine, because it's been, you can't replace those, you can't replant those.
Right.
You won't live long enough to see that.
We'll need to see what, you know, what you're planning on doing with stormwater. This is going to be well-inseptic?
Well-inseptic, catch basins on the, on the, on the sides. Yeah, stormwater, so we already thought about that.
Yeah, okay, all right.
It's a U shed, right? Is that a scenic U shed overlay area?
Might be.
Might be, yeah. So those are the kind of things that.
I feel like the one further, the other one, Ferris's was, right?
Hmm, I don't know. Yeah.
I don't remember.
Kemco was.
Kemco was, yeah.
Yeah, that's on Baker Road as well.
I just have a quick question.
Pleasance Ridge.
Oh, Pleasance Ridge, yeah.
Would you want us to put in the plans for both the subdivision of the lots and the homes at the same time, or can we separate, just doing the subdivisions?
They don't have to submit the homes.
The homes are, the homes are basically just, you're just locating the rectangles and, and demonstrating that you can get a driveway in there.
An septic.
And so that's the extent to what you have to show us.
Okay.
That the shape of the home, the, you know, the square footage of the home, the design of the home, that you deal with a code enforcement officer when you go for a building permit.
And that, we don't have aesthetic review on that. We, we maintain it with the town center, but not residential homes.
Gotcha.
Have you done, I know this is, you've done a lot of detail, so I'll relax. Did you do any soil investigation, do you have?
Percolation, you know that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you think you have soils?
Oh, that's, that's, that's fortunate.
I saw in the research, part of pre-application, so that's why we, we took a look at everything. Yeah, so we're there.
No, no issues with the percolations at all.
For septic and well, that's, that's, it's fortunate.
Yes.
Yeah, because, you know, there's a lot of other conditions that make it very difficult. Along 55.
Oh, yeah, that's clay, that's.
Clay, yeah, and rock.
Is this a stream quarter in the bottom little triangle?
No.
Oh, okay. I don't know where that is.
No wetlands, no water. There's a, there's a small bit of wetlands in the very front.
Okay.
But it doesn't even appear like that, like, when you actually walk the land, you can't even really tell.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Do you see it?
Yep. So, where is that on?
I think it's like more towards actual Baker Road versus being in the back of the lane.
Yeah, this right here is Baker.
That's Baker, so it's right, yeah, somewhere around there, in the middle of the triangle?
Yeah, kind of.
Yeah, so right around here.
Yeah.
It's showing, I believe, in that area.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't know if it's a be an issue for what we're looking for.
So that, that would be important to put on the plans.
Okay.
The wetlands.
Yeah, like I said, we'd like to see how you plan on handling stormwater practices, because that's not, that may have an impact on your lot.
Your orientation, yeah. Do you have stormwater management plan in here?
No, no.
Okay.
I will get that.
Yeah, that would be an item that Dan would want, our town engineer.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I think it's well found out.
No, I think it's good that you're trying to stay, and it's not always possible, but you're trying to work within the confines of the bulk regulations, and that's always a good thing. Didn't have to go for the variance.
Right.
Nice meeting you.
The recommended next step would be for?
Sit down with Dan.
Sit down, yep, see, see Alitha.
Okay.
She'll need to reach out. Dan is going on vacation until the 4th of April, I think, he'll be back around the 4th of April.
Okay.
Our town engineer.
Yes, I know Dan.
You know Dan, and, and Craig are, are town attorneys, so they'll establish the amount.
Okay.
For escrow, that will allow him to then review it and put a comment letter together.
Perfect.
Do you have to work on the application, though? And have that all ready, and then this way, all you'll need to do is figure out the amount to go with the application.
Okay.
And Craig establishes.
Thank you, this is very nice. I wish everybody came in that.
Clearly does his homework.
Oh, no, it's really nice. Well, obviously, you're vested in this.
Thank you very much.
Great, thanks meeting you.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you, thank you.
That was checked, checked, checked. I'll make a motion to close the meeting. I'll second.
I'll third it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Now to go back out into that cold.
Yeah.